Hi everyone, Hello everyone. In our morning study group, we have seen a lot of judicial topics. So today we are going to talk about one topic. So before we start, we need to know what are the issues. What are the main points of discussion in this video?
The topic of discharge is about discharge. When you discharge, you can discuss it in practice. But for example, if you have experienced it, I will share with you. If you have seen discharge in CRPC, you can use it only in one section. Even though the word discharge has been used in seven sections of CRPC, each section has a different meaning and each section comes under different chapter. So you should remember this. Overall, CRPC only uses one section for discharge. But even if they are same meaning, there is no difference. There is a different section in each section. Okay. Now, what is discharge? When does it start? After furnishing copies of the session to not so CRPC. To not so copies produced before discharge. Okay. Now, we have used it in CRPC. Usually, in master court, the chapter 19 is very important. Because for example, we have noted the section 59, 227, 239, 245, 442 and 444. In the section 227, we have used it. But even though the word discharge has been used in seven sections. So in the section 227, but each section has a different meaning and each section comes under different topic, different chapter. After the copies furnished, we can use discharge provision. This is because of charge frame, we can use discharge. In master court, only chapter 19 is applicable. Chapter 19, 239 and 245, only two cases are covered. Charge framing, sorry, discharge provision. When does it start? Only charge framing is required, we can use discharge. Suppose if there is a charge frame, there is no necessity. Substance only is explained enough. So if there is a charge frame, there is no provision. So discharge is only covered. Cover cases can be classified into two types. First type is 173 class tool, police report cases. Second category is private complaint. Only in these two cases, usually CRPC uses discharge provision. Sessions court only uses 227, but that is not ours. Okay. Now, regarding discharge provision, we have seen a lot of things. In the 239 section, it is important to use it. Similarly, CRPC also uses 245. Both of them have some knowledge of each other. Suppose now, we have used discharge in CRPC. Do you know which section is right on a section? If it is wrong coating or provision, we cannot use discharge. There is a situation. 1988, CRJ 1415, Gowkati High Court, Division Bench, the State versus Robert. This is paragraph number three. So, this is what they are saying. This being the position in law, no fault can be really be found because of mentioning of section 227 instead of section 239. So 227 CRPC in the section, you have charged. You have charged 299 in the section. That is why no fault can be found. Okay. Now, 227, 239, 245, these three sections are there. Master court only, chapter number 19 is very important. Chapter number 19, 299, 245. In 299, what is used? Charge against accused to be groundless. The groundless is very important. In 245 CRPC, no case against accused is made out. No case is very important. In 299, 245, only two cases are used. That is 239, whereas 245, no case against accused made out. Okay. Now, in 239 CRPC, you can see one section. One section is used. What is hearing? They explain and interpret it. 1987, volume 3, crimes, 488. 1987, volume 3, crimes, page number 488, paragraph number nine. So, the citation's name is Rukh Kishore versus Dvarka Prashat. Rukh Kishore versus Dvarka Prashat. This is from a high court. In paragraph number nine, there is an answer. Hearing, what is the meaning? Is it oral hearing or granting audience? So it is very important. Hearing, what is the meaning? Oral hearing or granting audience. This is only used in 299 CRPC. Hearing, you must make sure. In the citation, interpretation is required. Okay. If the same is used, what is the meaning? That is why there is a citation. 1983, Ramalajan, CRJ 2331. 2331. Here in Karnataka, State of Karnataka versus G Laxman. The citation's name. What are they saying? Groundless, what is the meaning? Material placed before the court do not make prima facie. So this is a very important thing. What is the groundless's meaning? Careful examination or valid reason. Careful examination or valid reason is the meaning of the groundless. For 239 CRPC and 245 CRPC, what is the difference? 1986, A.R.S.C., 2045, Supreme Court, Division Bench, RS Nayak versus A.R. Paragraph number 46. So what are the differences between the two sections? 239 CRPC and 245 CRPC. In the citation, clear explanation is required. Now, we have seen a lot of things. 239 CRPC. Police report cases only 173 class. Whereas 245 CRPC, private complaint, 200. Okay. Now, when we use material placed before the court to be pursued carefully. Whereas 245, 244 CRPC. The 244 evidence, what is the statement? We can use it. We can use it. So this is the basic difference. 244 evidence, 173 class report. These are the two kinds of cases. Okay. Now, 245 CRPC, there are two types of discharge in under section. 245 class one or 248 two. The 245 class one, after 244. Charge frame, discharge is required. We can use 245 class one. But at any stage without, in this situation, without any previous stage. We can do it. 245 class. So it is very important. The question is noted. 245 class school, the master state may and the application of the prosecution. Sorry. 245 two, nothing in this section will be able to prevent a master state from discharging the accused at any previous stage of the case. It is very important. At any previous stage of the case is very important. For example, if a private complaint, discharge happens. That is why charge frame is created. Charge frame, trial comments. Trial comments, discharge is required. The 245 class two. But in the same case, discharge happens. Charge frame is created. During the trial, discharge does not occur. So this is very important. The 245 class two is a normal example. Witness was not produced. Complaint was made. He is very long. In the steps, he initiated. 245 class two, we can discharge. This is a situation. 1987, CRJ triple five. 1987, CRJ triple five. This is from a division bench. Agadu Das versus Bob and Barita. Agadu Das versus Bob and Barita. So in the situation. Accused may be discharged in a warrant case instituted upon a complaint. If the complaint has not produced witnesses on several days of hearing despite direction to that effect. So many people are concerned. Witness was not produced. That is why discharge is required. Okay. Now, 245 class one, 244's evidence, based on 245. Discharge is required. So 245 class one, discretion power, photo discretion. No, that is the answer. So 1995, CRJ 2874, Bombay High Court, Single Bench. So here is paragraph number 11. What are they saying? Judicially, access to discretion power, a court can access it. In respect of 245 class one, CRPC. Next, a final report, police report case. Final report filed. Sorry. Police report case, final report filed before discharge. If he has not filed, if he has not filed. Is it possible to use discharge? No. This is a situation. 1949, A.R.Calcutta, page number 187. This is single bench. A.C. Samadar, S.A.M.A.D.R. Samadar versus Fresh. Here is paragraph number six. So if he has not filed, discharge is required. Next, if we want to hear discharge petition. For example, who files the discharge petition? Accused to file. Accused to file, discharge petition, counter. Counter. Here is a normal. But victim, opportunity is required. There is no need to give it. 2011, A.R.S.C., 1103, Supreme Court, Division Bench, RS Mishra versus State of Orissa. Paragraph number 19. So what did we see? If he has not filed, discharge is not allowed. Similarly, discharge happens. Charge frame is created. Trial commenced. During the trial. During the trial, discharge is allowed. Not. Another situation. 1979, A.R.S.C., page number 94, Supreme Court, Bull Bench. Ratilal Banshi versus State of Maharashtra, paragraph number 20. Once again, repeat the citation. 1979, A.R.S.C., page number 94, paragraph number 20. So trial commenced means LW one, PW one is examined. That is why discharge is not allowed. Okay. In master court, we have seen PRC case. Sessions court only, PRC. Copies furnished. Terminal. Terminal. But for a master state, sessions court, discharge is not allowed. Not. But old CRPC, 1887 CRPC, terminal state. But the same provision is present. 1973 CRPC, there is no provision. That is why master state has no power. Sessions court only, master state, discharge is not allowed. 2012, volume 3, crimes, 253. 2012, volume 3, crimes, 253. Okay. Now, in what situations, why is it not possible to use discharge? For example, if a sanction is applied. That is not valid ground to file a discharge petition. Proper investigation is not done. Proper investigative is not done. That is why discharge is not allowed. For example, two not so copies. One of the accused's copies. That is why discharge is not allowed. If the same is used, illegal arrest is not allowed. That is why discharge is not allowed. So all of this is not available. This is the basic knowledge of the issues. Okay. Now, discharge petition filed. What are the things that has to be considered by the court is very important. If we have charged petition. What are the issues? We need to observe. This is a situation. 1977, A.R.S.C., 2018. 1977, A.R.S.C., 2000. Here is 177, A.R.S.C., page number 2018, 2018. Supreme Court, Division Bench, paragraph number four. State of Bihar versus Ramais Singh. This is a concept. What is criminal jurisprudence? Every person is presumed to be innocent until a person is proved. Every person is presumed to be innocent until a person is proved. It is a common belief. He is not guilty. In Tamil. In India, we have jurisprudence. But it is quite opposite. France only. Every person is presumed to be guilty unless the contrary is proved. Unless the contrary is proved. Then, France only. But in India, we have a concept. This is why, in charge frame, what is the situation? What is the problem? What materials are required for discharge? Now, if we have charged petition. When we have charged petition. Can we use the condition? That is not allowed. That is what I am saying. If a case is solved. If the materials are there. We do not need to observe. This is a proposition of law. For example, a mere suspicion. Is it true? Charge frame is required. Only two ways. One is strong suspicion, the other is mere suspicion. Is it mere suspicion? Is it discharge required? Or is it strong suspicion? A question. Is it mere suspicion? 2002, A.R.S.C., page number 564. 2002, A.R.S.C., page number 564. Here is paragraph number 12, Supreme Court, Division Bench. Dilaver Balu versus State of Maharashtra. Okay. Now, a final report. Police report case, 173 class filed. That is why they provide the materials. Okay. Now, we have charged petition. Prosecution, documents, avonages. Is it true? Is it valuable? Probative value is there. Discharge petition stage, we can observe. In this discharge stage, the avonages are all true. Is it true? We need to prove. 2007, A.R.S.C., 2149. This is Supreme Court, Division Bench. Shoma Chakravarti versus C.B.A. Paragraph number 32, 2007, A.R.S.C., 2149. It is apparent that at the stage of framing of a charge, probative value of the materials on record cannot be gone into. So if the avonages are not true. Okay. Now, we have charged petition. If the avonages are solved. Circumstantial evidence or direct evidence. That is all. We can observe. So this is a situation. 2004, A.R.S.C., 3967. 2004, A.R.S.C., 3967, Supreme Court, Division Bench, paragraph number 11. Okay. Now, we have charged petition. What purpose? In the same time, can we invoke discharge? Discharge stage, a plaintiff said. When you invoke a petition. The documents are true. That is why CRPC is asking. In this stage, discharge stage. So in the discharge stage, 91 CRPC petition. Is it allowed? 2005, A.R.S.C., 359. 2005, A.R.S.C., 359. This is Supreme Court, Bull Bench, paragraph number 2325. State of Orissa versus Deebendranath Badi. State of Orissa versus Deebendranath Badi. What is important? This is 2005. But this is 2000. 91 CRPC invoked. But the view has been overturned in this judgment. 2005 overturned is very important. So if you ignore the 2005 situation. If you have a participant. 2005, you should not use it. Because that view has been overturned in the case of State of Orissa versus Deebendranath Badi. I am talking about a paragraph. What is the meaning? Discharge stage, 91 CRPC, advocate petition filed. There should not be allowed, there should not be heard. Okay. Now, in the discharge petition stage, Alibindas stand. He is using. Discharge petition has said. What is the reason? Does Alibindas stand? Is it allowed? Is it allowed? 1995, CRJ 2587. 1995, CRJ 2587. This is from a high court, Single Bench, paragraph number 13. Okay. Case in counter. You have seen. A party, B party, same time occurrence. They have a affair. Two cases in counter. Now, A party, B party, materials, discharge. Or B party, A party, documents, discharge. This is not considered. 1984, volume 1, crimes, page number 942. 1984, volume 1, crimes, 942. Here is paragraph number three. Thus, the landlord master had committed an illegality by taking into consideration the materials in the counter case while passing impugned order. The impugned order cannot be sustained. So when you are advocating. You have discussed. This is why discharge is required. You can ask. Okay. Now, 172 CRPC case. Now, if we consider. That is why, master state, discharge is not allowed. Order is not allowed. That is wrong, that cannot be accepted. So, normally, you know the issue. The case area, court can consider. Case area, master state, discharge. Is not allowed. 1983, CRJ 1151. 1983, CRJ 1151. Om Prakash and another versus State, Division Bench, Calcutta High Court, paragraph number 7. So, until now, we have seen Alibindas stand. Case in counter, materials. 91 CRPC. This is all. This is not allowed. What is it? What is it? Accused avonages. That is why discharge is not allowed. Only the avonages are required for discharge. So discharge is on what basis of the document? Of course, prosecution document only. Accused avonages, documents, discharge is not required. Okay. Until now, we have said. What are the reasons? Now, if the court can discharge. For example, 294B. Public. But in particular cases, in the house. We have talked. Accused avonages. But in such a situation. Discharge is not allowed. The same is used. Four of woman harassment act. Accused must be. There are women. Female person is not allowed. So, this is a basic issue. The accusers are included. Now, in section 4 of woman harassment title, no woman can be accused in case of section 4 of Tamil Nadu one provision act. That is, Tamil Nadu one harassment. Accused is not allowed. But in such a case, if a woman is accused. Now, section is not allowed. In this circumstances, discharge petition is not allowed. This is an example. 2006, volume 4, CTC. Page number 374. 2006, volume 4, CTC. 2006 वॉल्यूम 4 CTC 374 बसीर अगमद वर्सेस स्टेट ऑफ तमिलनाडु बसीर अगमद वर्सेस स्टेट ऑफ तमिलनाडु पैरानंबर 9 सो ना सुना उर उदार वंदा तमिलनाडु वुमन ग्रस्ट में टाइट ला इधर रिपोर्ट साइटेशन ना इधर करद बट उनके फैक्ट ऑफ डी केस पढ़ता मतलब इंद्र द सेक्शन के इन बस उनके तरंच रुकना अंदर इंक्रीडिएंट मेरो टाकल अब इन द अदर अदन डिपारे ला पुरा डिसार्ज केकला कोर्ट वंदे कागनिस्त से देते कुम्ब वो द इधर कंटीपा प्रसोत पन उमा कागनिस्त इरके कुम्ब कल बड़ा मरना कुरा डिसार्ज वंदे अलोप पन इकरला सो इधर ला वंदे ओर डिफरेंस अपॉन डी अपॉन्स था फ्री ओके इप्पा नायर के सोने स्टार्टिंग ले वेरी फर्स्ट ना ना स्टार्ट पन मुद अट डी आउटसेट ला वार्ट यूज़ पन ना इन ना सोने अब इन ना CRPC ला ये सट्टा प्रभु कला मत्तू था डिसार्ज इन द वार्ट पाइन पटला पटरकर सोने इधर ये ले यूं तांडी जुडीशल प्रोन्यूसमेंट ला 100 डिसार्ज इन द इरके रद इन ना अब इन ना फॉर एग्जांपल वर केस ला वंदे वर 4 नाल अक्स तू रुक रांग 4 अक्स ला वंदे 4 अला अक्स वंदे NBDW आए थे स्प्लिट अपनी आते बोधो मून के अक्स वंदे ट्राय नरते अक्षर लाइट आंग इंडिया मून अक्स तू वंदे एवरेंस देता वचत ला 4 अला अक्स अदर इन द अक्स इन विल याना रो अवर अपॉर्चुन मतलब अवर यू इंडिया एवरेंस बताने इंस सपरबल आकर इन द अदर अदे एवरेंस वंदे इवर को सोल्ड पटले रखद अब इन ना इंडिया NBDW याना अक्स वंदे अवर पैरंट केस वंदे अलरेडी अक्षर ला इरके रुक सब्सीक्यूलर कोड या स्प्लिट अप केस पढ़ता मतलब ऑटोमेटिक आवे डिसार्ज पन इरला अब इन द था तमिलमारन वर्सेस स्टेट 2007 वन लॉ वैकलीक क्रिमिनल पेज नंबर 914 तमिलमारन वर्सेस स्टेट इधर पैरानंबर 4 इन ना कंडीशन अब इन ना अंदर एवरेंस वंदे इंस सपरबल आकर ना कामन आकर इबड़ी वंदा कोर्ट वर टाइट वंदे विन निकाम अंदर अक्स वंदे डिसार्ज पन इरला बट इंडिया डिसार्ज एंड रवार्ड प्रोविजन ला नियंत्रित करा अनार था ना डी आउटसेट ले सोने CRPC ला स्टेट आवे पता इन ये ले रत ला वार्ट पाइन पटला पटरकर डिसार्ज बट इधर पढ़ता मतलब इट इज जुडीशल प्रोन्यूसमेंट ना तो बाय वे ऑफ साइटेशन था इधर ला वंदे प्रैक्टिस ला कुड़िया विषय इन द पो नियंत्रित प्रैक्टिस ला पात रुके ओके इप्पा वेयर इन ना कारण ने डिपारे डिसार्ज पन मुड़ी मा अब इन ना लिमिटेशन वार आए थे अब इन ना ऑटोमेटिक डिसार्ज पनला टेकिंग कॉग्निशन इन द नानी तेरु दत ला सोल्ड पटला लिमिटेशन को उठपट इरके वेंट सपोज़ लिमिटेशन वार आए थे अब इन ना अंदर कारण तेरी पर डिसार्ज केकला सो इधर के वंदे नम्मड़े साइटेशन वाला सोल्ड नोट पनिके 1999 CRJ 3479 1999 CRJ 3479 सुप्रीम कोर्ट डिविजन पेंशन अरुण वियास एंड अनदर वर्सेस अनिता वियास पैरानंबर 17 सो डिसार्ज जदन डे ग्रोंड ला वरूम ना इंक्रीडिएंट मेरो टाकल ना वरू लिमिटेशन वार आए थे ना वरू तमिलमारन वर्सेस स्टेट ला पटला अंदर फैक्ट अदर वो पैरंट केस अक्षर लाइट इंस सपरबल एवरेंस आर अंदर सब्सीक्यूलर विद केसिंग पनला मुड़े द इंदकारण तेरी पर डिसार्ज वरू ओके इप्पा वारंट केस पढ़ता मतलब डिसार्ज वरू अदर बेसिक आना नियंत्रित रुक सम्मान्स केस के वर्मा ना वराद ओके इधर सम्मान्स केस के डिसार्ज वराद अब इन द नम्मड़े हाईकोर्ट ला 1999 CRJ 2236 2236 1999 CRJ 2236 मदास हाईकोर्ट सिंगल पेंशन बी कन्नन वर्सेस संतानम ऑनरबल जस्टिस तरपकम नायर अमरुद रुकते रुक पैरानंबर 9 सो सम्मान्स केस के डिसार्ज वराद अवर देयर इस नो प्रवेशन फॉर डी सम्मान केस तू फाइल एप्लीकेशन डिसार्ज अंडर सेक्शन 245 CRPC सो पैरानंबर 9 ले पता इन ना विल गेट डी आंसर सर 138 केस से पढ़ता मतलब डिसार्ज वर्मा ना कंटीपा वराद A.R. 2021 S.C. 1957 A.R. 2021 S.C. 1957 इंद्र एक्सपीडियस ट्रेल ऑफ केस अंडर सेक्शन 138 इन ना याक्तन या वाच रुक इधर ला पैरानंबर 21 ओके इप्पा रुकोर्ड ला वंदे ओर प्रीडेसिसर वंदे वर मैसेज वंदे डिसार्ज पेटिशन डिस्विस्ड में डिसार्ज फ्रेम नहीं आते सब्सीक्यूलर वर कुड़िया वर मैसेज वंदे डिसार्ज पन द सो इधर ना सरियाना पोशिशन आ कटाना व्यू अब इन ना अदर तवर बिकॉज़ वंस वंदे वर आर्डर पास पन आते ना अदर ओर जुडीशल आर्डर सो अदर रिवीन डी कांसेप्ट ला वंदरो अदर तवर अनार वंदे डिसार्ज प्रीडेसिसर पन ना चार्ज फ्रेम यंदर सब्सीक्यूलर वर डे मैसेज वंदे डिसार्ज अलोप पन लाना पनक कोरा सो इधर के साइटेशन वंदे 1987 A.R.C. 773 1987 A.R.C. 773 सुप्रीम सुप्रीम कोर्ट डिविजन पेंशन स्टेट ऑफ हिमाचल प्रदेश वर्सेस कृष्ण कृष्ण लॉल कृष्ण लॉल पैरानंबर 7 ओके सो इधर के डिसार्ज वंदे इंद्र द कारण ने डिपारे ला डिसार्ज वरुम पात इंद्र द कारण तेरी डिसार्ज वराद पात डिसार्ज कान इंक्रीडिएंट ना पात इन ना स्टेज वरुम सुरी रुद इप्पा वंस वंदे डिसार्ज पेटिशन डिस्विस आए थे ना अप्पील वर्मा ना अप्पील वराद सो इधर नोट पनिके 1977 वॉल्यूम 4 SEC 551 1977 वॉल्यूम 4 SEC 551 सुप्रीम कोर्ट गुल्बेंच मधु लिमाई वर्सेस स्टेट ऑफ महाराष्ट्र सो वन मोर साइटेशन सोल्ड 1991 CRJ 3012 1991 CRJ 3012 ओरिशा हाईकोर्ट सिंगल पेंशन इधर ला पैरानंबर 3 नो राइट ऑफ अप्पील इस प्रोवाइडेड अकेंस्ट एन आर्डर इन एसिस ऑफ पावर अंडर सेक्शन 239 CRPC सो डिसार्ज पेटिशन डिस्विस आए थे ना व्हाट इस डी रेमेडी इन द उनके तेरियो अप्पील कंटीपा वराद ओके इप्पा व्हाट अबाउट सेक्शन 300 CRPC अब इन द था वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट 300 CRPC ला वार्ट पट चुरिया अड़ी ला वार्ट कर रुक डिस्विसल ऑफ डी कंप्लेंट और डिसार्ज ऑफ डी अक्स तो नॉट अक्षर ला अब इन वार्ट कर रुक अदमान ला या वाच रुक सो इधर ला वंदे ओर बेसिक आना विषय गल ला सुरी रुक अलमोस्ट है कवर्ड ऑल डी टॉपिक थैंक्स फॉर पैसेंस हेयरिंग